About order.
Hello.
Travis, could you give the invocation, please?
Let's stand. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to thee tonight, Lord, to do business for this great town. We ask that you be with us, help us make the decisions that is most effective for our community. I lift up the leaders, Lord, in this town, and our staff, and our citizens. We ask that you be with each one. Pray that you provide blessings over our community during this outbreak and scares that we see in the national media. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, gentlemen, you've got an agenda before you. Are there any amendments to the current agenda?
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion in support of the council here. If we could move business item number one to the consent agenda in reference to the bid, award, and contract approval for the replacement of the HVAC units at the town hall and the police department.
Second.
I've got a motion, a second in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Mayor, one other thing, the committee for the Economic Development Committee, they asked to pull the presentation that was item number four, probably until next month. They're gonna have a meeting tomorrow night to get over that final draft one more time, if that's all right.
That's fine, we don't need a motion for that.
No, sir.
All right, any other changes to the agenda?
Make a motion, approve the agenda?
Second.
In discussion. All in favor say aye. All right. Move to our presentations. Chief, Michael Scott, you'll step forward from the front, join you for the presentation of law enforcement certificates for Officer Byer, Officer Hunt.
I'd ask Sergeant Byer and K-9 Officer Hunley to step up here, please.
Sergeant Jason Byer and K-9 Officer Kenny Hunley here tonight to receive their advanced law enforcement certificates from the North Carolina Education and Training Standards Commission. Sergeant Byer and Officer Hunley join 15 other members of the Smithfield Police Department that have earned this specific recognition. To earn the advanced certificate, these officers had to surpass several law enforcement thresholds, including achieving an associate's degree, having at least nine years' law enforcement experience, and completing over 720 hours of law enforcement training. These certificates are only issued to these officers who are able to surpass these thresholds as these two officers have done. They are very good police officers for the community, for the police department, and very instrumental in the professionalism of our agency. Please congratulate them on this achievement.
I'm gonna read it real quick. The North Carolina Criminal Justice Education and Training Standards. Let it be known that recognition of attainment of training and education objectives commensary with the role of a professional criminal justice officer, and a personal devotion and service to the people of North Carolina, Attorney General, and the Chairman and members of the North Carolina Criminal Justice Education and Training Standards Commission, for the authority vested by the law of the state hereby awarded. Jason has advanced law enforcement certificates. Congratulations.
Thank you. His is exactly the same.
At this time, the Appearance Commission annual report is gonna be given, and I'm gonna ask Anita Liverman to come to the front and give us a presentation.
You have the commission's report before you. I highlight that the majority of funds were used to remove locust trees that were on Market Street, replace them with hyperbark maples, and also add Washington hawthorns on Brightleaf Boulevard. It's been very helpful to have Councilman Harris attend our meetings, and Smithfield has fine employees who attend every meeting, Lenny Branch and Shannon Williams.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Y'all have any questions for Anita?
No, Mayor, I'd like to also commend her on the work that you all are doing on the Appearance Commission, and I wish you for your continued support from the town.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation by Johnson County Economic Development Director.
Good morning, Council. Good afternoon, Council. The Mayor told me this morning I had a full hour to do my presentation, but I'll try to be brief. But I did want to kinda give you an update from the county on what we've been doing, where we're going on our vision, and just make sure that we're connected. I know that my predecessor, it was not his forte to go out and make presentations like this, but I might wanna make sure that, as one that formerly served on the advisory board and worked for the town of Smithfield, I wanna make sure that I'm well-connected not only with the town of Smithfield, but with all the communities of Johnston County. So I'm gonna be doing this throughout the county, and Smithfield is the very first. I talk about economic development and fishing, and there are some times that people like to fish on the bank of a pond, they like to cane pole fish, they like to put a worm on the hook and sit there and wait for something to come by and bite. Well, if the fish are biting, then everything's great, but what's happening when the economy turns maybe south, the fish aren't biting. Sometimes we have to ramp things up and go with rod and reels, and we have to use top board to bait, we may have to use bottom board to bait, we may have to get in a boat and ride around the pond, we may have to move around the pond and make sure that we're working. The thing is, who's really fishing? Both cane pole fishermen or the person with the rod and reel, both are fishing, but the main thing is, is that sometimes the fish don't bite, sometimes you gotta go look for them, and that's what I want this office to do. Sometimes, I think in the past, because of where our close proximity is to the Triangle and to Raleigh, we've just been kinda sitting on the bank waiting for the big fish to come by and nibble. But I'm just here to tell you that I'm gonna be on the boat, and I'm gonna be out there with the rod and reel, and hopefully that you guys will be right there with me. What I wanna do now is just kinda talk about some of the inquiries that the office has received for the past year. There's never really been any kind of statistical data that I've been able to find at the office, and so one of the first things that I've said, well, how do we compare against what we've done in the past? So I've gone through ever since I was hired, and I've been actually in the position since September 23rd, one year. And Johnston County has received 37 requests for information, or RFIs, and that's basically either coming from our economic development partners such as Commerce, Duke Energy, Electric Cities, Research, Triangle Park, Regional Partnership, you name it, that's where it's coming, or actually from local real estate agents or commercial real estate developers. From that, we've had about 10 client visits, so our statistics are pretty good. Now, sometimes you get a lot of stuff, and all they're doing is just trying to collect data to be able to use against maybe a competitor that we don't even know who we're competing against, but we've actually had 10 clients come through Johnston County, and we've had a couple of them looking in Smithfield, so that's very encouraging. Projects by area, you can see here that Smithfield leads the county. A couple of reasons for that is that we've got some available properties. We've had the Kenner Lumber Mill that's been looked at several times, we've had the Steve Hargis Building, which is now off the market for that matter, out near the airport, that's been shown several times, and it just recently was leased. But then also, we've got other sites that we've looked at and talked about, the Hill Property, as well as the Wellands Howel Site, which is state-certified, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Projects by sites and buildings, again, the Hargis Building is up at the top at seven, the Wellands Howel at six, the Channel Master is three, Hill Site, three. So you can see there that it's been kind of across the spectrum of what people have been looking for, buildings and sites, and just one, every time that I get an RFI, obviously they're looking for specific data or specific sites. I try to squeeze as much information on many properties as possible into those RFIs, because obviously if they're looking for a railroad site, Smithfield is very limited in that, but if they're looking for something that's on the interstate, at an interstate, at an exit, then Smithfield fares very well. Projects by industry, we've had 16 warehouse and distribution, obviously with the transportation links that we've got with Interstate 95 and 40, as well as Selma, 70, plus proximity to the ports and the rail and then things. Warehouse and distribution is always gonna kinda lead, just for the nature of where we are. Manufacturing is coming back, we've had 12 projects, look at that. Obviously, we lost a lot of manufacturing in the mid-'90s. I mean, I've given presentations many a time and talked about how Smithfield and Selma over the three-year period in the mid-'90s lost over 4,500 jobs with the closing of Channel Master, Fieldcrest Mills, Burlington Mills, Eaton Corporation in Selma, the loss of the tobacco market in Carr and Edwards Tobacco, and also the tobacco buyout and how it affected the tobacco market. So we lost a ton of jobs in the mid-'90s. Unfortunately, unfortunately, I don't think the town really felt the brunt of that until today, because during that same time in the mid-'90s, we also had the tremendous growth of the outlet center. It went from public, well, from private to public, it went from Carolina Pottery to Factory Stores of America to what it is today. So we've had a lot of tremendous growth in the retail, but we've lost our core manufacturing as well as our industries. So what are inquiries looking for? Well, this is a stat from Colliers International, and this is not just Johnston County statistics, this is across North Carolina and the nation, or at least the southeast. Actually, 75% of all inquiries are looking for existing buildings. However, only 25% actually go into a building once they land here. But the key thing is having product available that'll get them even to look at us. So that's kinda been the biggest problem or the challenge that I see from my office, and that's what I'm gonna talk about in a little bit to combat that. So what we got to offer? Well, again, going back to statistics, we really never, if I'd asked anybody in the office or anybody that dealt with economic development in Johnston County, what's the typical size building? Nobody really could tell me. So over the past year, we've had inquiries anywhere between 15,000 square feet up to a million, and everything in between. However, the sweet spot is around 80,000 square feet, but we need 26 to 28-foot ceilings. We've got a lot of inventory here in Smithfield, we've got the Channel Master Building, we've got other buildings, however, that has a lot of square footage, but either they're the distance of columns holding up the roofs, or the roofs are, the ceilings are only, you know, 19 feet or less. So that's what we're looking for, as well as natural gas, water, sewer, electricity, kinda the standard stuff. For sites, again, we've had inquiries from 5 acres of land up to 600 acres of land and everything in between. However, again, traditionally, people are looking for about 20 acres of land. Certified sites is becoming more and more important. We've got two of those right here in Smithfield, and I can tell you right now, the Hill Property as well as the Wellands Howel Site has been seen time and time again. More inquiries are, when they call the office, they're specifically asking for those sites because they know that it's already gone through a list of criterias, and if we wanna discuss what a certified site is, we can do so at the end. But also, the inexpensive land cost. Unfortunately, we've got some property in Johnston County that's being marketed at $60, $80,000 dollars an acre, and I'm being told by, you know, by leadership saying, now you tell them that that's negotiable. The thing is, is that a lot of times, whatever's out there is public, that we're being knocked off or not even being considered without even us being notified or being, because most of this stuff is out there on the internet, and they can do searches, and obviously if they see a tract of land that's valued or that's priced at $80,000, they're just gonna go on to the next thing. So we're missing out on a lot of people that we have no clue that's even looking at us. And of course, incentives, and that's something that this, I'm confident that this town is working on, I think, and the Economic Development Group and KEN is working through some things. So that's something that obviously we can discuss later and be coming up later. But I will tip my hat to KEN in working with existing businesses about the electric rates and being very, very competitive, because it's been an opening experience over the last year of working with some of our existing industries. Here in Smithfield, hearing the issue of higher electric rates, but knowing that the cogeneration options that they've got really bring it down and make it very, very competitive or even beat Duke. So what are we gonna do? Obviously, having certified sites is about a checklist of about 33, 34 things that the state is looking for, and it's also, it's things like option to purchase, zoning, making sure that infrastructure's already in place, water, sewer, soil borings, geotechnical, wetlands delineation, site maps, it's about 35, 33, 34 things that are there. What I'm proposing that Johnston County's gonna do, not only just for Smithfield, but also some of our smaller communities, is come up with a Johnston County Ready Site. And I've already spoken with Rocky Lane, and we're gonna be working with some other site consultants like that, to come up with, what's a top five or six things that communities can do to make sure that they're ready, that doesn't have to necessarily spend the $34, $35,000 for those things, and to have a one-to-one grant opportunity with, excuse me, a four-to-one grant opportunity with the county. So basically, what we can do is come in, the town has some skin in the game, but then also have the land already under purchase, have the zoning already done, have all the utilities mapped out to make sure that we can supply what their needs, or have that in a ready package, but then also kinda pre-spend a little bit of money to make sure that, you know, some of the geotechnical stuff and some of the engineering stuff that companies do that cost companies time, and that's the key thing, is that a lot of times, companies don't want to spend six months to nine months studying a tract of land only to walk away from it. So what's happening, and more and more communities are doing this, or having those answers already, or those questions answered, so it shortens the time for business. But obviously, some of the examples of what we're talking about is, you know, 20 acre minimum, utilities on sites, option to purchase, properly zoned, proposed site development layout, wetlands delineated, geotechnical. Most of that stuff can be done for about $4,000 to $5,000. So we think that we can do a lot of the stuff that would answer a lot of the questions, and come up with something that's very creative that nobody else in the state of North Carolina that I'm aware of is doing. So not only are we able to answer businesses and industries' questions, we're also being able to market ourselves across the state and the nation of doing something that nobody else is doing. One of the things that I've been told to get fired quickly is for the county or recommend to a town to build a spec building, and I'm not here to talk about that. But we obviously, going back to the very stat, the very statistical data that we talked about of how 75% of industry and clients are looking at existing buildings, how do we get that market, how do we get that building in there? And where's that lost leader? My wife and I are in the dress business, and obviously, you know, we've got a couple of high-priced dresses, and very few customers are able to come in and purchase those dresses. However, they're very nice to be able to put in the window, to get people to come through the door, to look at them, but then maybe buy something else. So it's kind of, it's what you refer to in the retail market as a lost leader. So the key thing is, is trying to figure out how we can get that product on the ground, because again, going back, other than maybe the Chloe Building and maybe one other building in Johnston County, we just do not have buildings what clients are looking for today. And again, I've had individual developers come up to me and say, well, Chris, now you bring me a good client, and I'll build him a building. Well, the thing is, is that if that's the case, you're looking at right there, at that point in time, at least a year to 18 months to have a building built. And industry and businesses are not gonna wait that long to have something built with unknown. So what we're gonna come up with is a Johnston County Ready Building, and this is modeled after Main Street. I came from a Main Street background, and we kinda did this, Ray Gibbs did this for downtown Greensboro for residential, but what we're hoping to do is that we've got some funds available through the nonprofit revolving loan pool side, and we hope to get some local developers to build a building and partner with them. And what we hope to do is that, at the time that the building is built to our specifications, that we'll start paying the debt service on the note for predetermined amount of time, 12 months, 18 months, whatever my board so chooses, and it's kinda determined on the front end, but we'll start paying the debt service on that note until the building is either sold or leased. And I'm hoping we can hedge our bets to say, well, if the building's almost ready to be built, there's gonna be a client looking for it because it's right there in front of them. Key thing is, is that it's something that they can take to the bank and also get some additional funding. But the key thing is, is just hedging our bet, getting product on the ground, and hopefully, what we hope to do then is that, as a catch for the county, is that once the property's either sold or leased, that we can work that into the contract, that the county can get its money back to then do another project, to get more product on the ground. I wanna talk about, obviously, 78% of all business, all new jobs created come from existing industries, and as I mentioned earlier, we're working with some existing industries here in Smithfield that are looking at possibly expanding, and we're excited about that, about moving divisions from other areas into Johnston County. But just over the past 18 months in Johnston County, we've had over $233 million worth of expansions. Now, you know, there's been some stuff at the Hargis Building, some upgrades there, the Kenner, I misspelled Kenner, that pointed out to me the other day, but there's been some smaller stuff like Technion Studios, they're getting ready to do over a million and a half dollars worth of expansion and changing over there, out there, and they're looking to possibly hire new employees out there. So we're excited about what's rebounding in the manufacturing. Unfortunately, with manufacturing, what is, what was lost in the mid-'90s in coming back is less employees. You know, gone are the days of, you know, the Channel Master-type facilities, have had 2,000 employees out there, 2,200 employees. If those facilities come back, they can do the same amount of work for less employees, they can probably do it for 400 or 500, just because of efficiency and things of that nature. So they're doing more or less, but manufacturing as a whole is coming back, it's just taking less employees. I talked about the six cylinders of the economy, and obviously, what I wanted to start doing is looking ways of cross-pollinating the businesses here. And you know, we've got the agricultural business combined with our manufacturing, and we've got medical and healthcare maybe combining with other things. So the key thing is, is making sure, is my task is to get out to our existing industries to see where we can assist and find out where there's needs that can be met within Johnston County. And I call it the cross-pollination, oh, went too far. Cross-pollination. Just to talk about some of the things that I'm excited about doing, fishing with rod and reel up to this thing. I had a movie, and I'm just, y'all later, so my time is up, but anyway, it's just some of the things that we're doing to try to market Johnston County, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions at this time.
Chris, are you staying in touch with existing businesses, making sure they stay happy and are not pirated away?
Yeah, I mean, that's key. Obviously, it's very competitive out there, because obviously, when I go out, I'm talking to people that have sites, I mean, we're working with an existing company here in Smithfield, in the city limits of Smithfield that has other sites, and talking to them about moving their, one of their divisions or their whole entire division down to Smithfield. So, I mean, and I'm confident that that discussion, I mean, they're looking at all their options, and hopefully we can make sure that, Smithfield and Johnston County, you know, I live here, so I wanna make sure that Smithfield is, I'm putting on my Johnston County hat, too, but it's, rising tide floats all boats.
Chris, when you're talking about building a spec building, is what I would call it, would that be done in a manner that you would do the shell and the interior build-out would be done at a later date to conform to what people might want?
There's been some discussion about that, because actually, one of the developers asked about, well, Chris, if we did this, because he, one of the local developers was really encouraged by what I was talking about, and the key thing about partnering with existing developers is that if the county or the town got into business of building buildings, then there's gonna be this us against them, where government is competing against the private developers, and I don't wanna, as a, you know, philosophically, I don't believe in that, but I wanna find out how business, or the government can assist and partner with private developers to encourage what government sees as a need. And so, the developer was asking, really got into the weeds of like, well, if I build a shell building, do I have to put in a concrete floor? Because as soon as I put in a concrete floor, they'd wanna drain here, or do this, or do that. I've talked to some developers or to some real estate consultants, and they've said that having concrete floors or having finished buildings has never been an issue of getting a client served because of what they can do today. The key thing is having a, again, time is money for industry and clients, and shortening that window, and getting more people to look at Johnston County.
Chris, have y'all spec'd the building, and what kinda cost are you looking at?
Anywhere between four and $5 million. It just depends on the amount of concrete, how high, you know, the ceilings are and things of that nature, but obviously, it could, and then also, there's land cost that's factored in. So some developers locally here already have land, so that's kind of, I don't say that's, I mean, it's real cost, but it's not something as you or I would have to go out and buy 20 acres of land and then build a building on it. We've talked about this, Paul and I have talked about this, as well as Steve Biggs with the town of Clayton, about finding out how, what towns can do to shorten that period of either dedicating staff to make sure they hold their hand through the process, again, and some other things that, I hate to put you on the spot, Paul, but I mean...
No, there's a lot of conversation about that, and I think part of it is, every project is a little bit different, and a lot of it, you get into the, they ask a question, you know, we give an answer, and they gotta go out and figure what they wanna do, and so the process is kinda delayed, and I think, I love the idea you brought up about kind of a, where it's Johnston County site-ready or Smithfield site-ready, whatever we can do to have more sites that are that much closer. That, to me, is something that I like to spend a lot of time with, and we've had some good conversations about it, so we definitely wanna join that program and do as much as we can for, are both land and also building sites to get them a little bit closer to show.
State-certified sites, the option to purchase is only limited for two years, and so, as the Hill Property or the Wellands Howel Site, it seems like we get it certified, and all of a sudden, we've got to start the application process all over. With our own site-ready program, we can, I know that the Forks Business Park is under option for 10, I mean, there's a lifelong option to some, on some of the property, and so we can kinda create our own rules, so to speak, on working with an existing landowner saying, okay, yes, I'll be more than happy to type my land for four years, so to speak, so we don't feel like we're just spinning our wheels or constantly trying to change. And speaking of Commerce and some of the things, there's a lot of uncertainty at the, at state Commerce. As this town of Smithfield has seen, there's a lot of unfunded mandates and changes that state government has passed on to our local municipalities. The same thing happens with Commerce, that's constantly changing. They're probably gonna be relying more and more on our local economic developers to do some of the things that the state used to do. So the county sees the challenge there, and some of the things that came from the Abernathy Report was making sure that I'm out in front of clients, and again, I'll not standing on the bank with the cane pole, but actually getting out and working. But know my office is open, and know that you're being well-represented. I can say that, not only because I live in Smithfield, but because the stats show it, but the reason that it's being well-represented is because y'all have done the work over the past four or five years of having those sites available. Now, we haven't hit yet, and as I can relate it to Main Street, you know, a lot of times when I was the Main Street manager, when I would meet with somebody, a decision would be made within two weeks to two months. Somebody would either go in that building or make a determination, and chances are, I'm talking to the person that can make that decision. Unfortunately, with the business that I'm in now, I'm never talking to the final decision-maker. I'm either talking to their attorney, or their site consultant, or their real estate agent, or some other, you know, CPA within the company, and they're sending the information back up. There's so many layers, I hate to say the word bureaucrats, but there's just so many decision-makers, and the thing is, is that decision's not gonna be made for six months to even two years. So there's things that I'm working on now that Peggy Anderson had been working on, that I'm continuing to massage and work, and you never know, the economy may, something may happen, and, you know, that project disappears, and you've got a year, year and a half of work just basically thrown away. So unfortunately, that's kind of just letting you know the insides of what all economic developers are up developers are up against today.
Any other questions for Chris?
I appreciate the support that I was given at the Town of Smithfield when I worked with DSDC. I'll always be grateful for this organization, so thank you very much.
Chris, thank you for taking your time to come tonight. Appreciate it.
At this time, we opened the council session up for citizens' comments. Is there anybody who's from the citizen group that'd like to make a comment? If not, we'll move on to the regular agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second in discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving to the business items, we've moved item number one to the consent agenda, so we'll move directly to number two, discussion on electric economic development rider. Ken Griffin.
The Town Manager and I would like to get your thoughts on developing an additional tool for you and the Town Manager and myself to use, and working with Mr. Johnson and existing businesses and potential new businesses for Smithfield for expansion and relocation here. We have a number of electric rates, about 20 in all. We do not have an economic development rate or an economic development rider. The rider would be something that would go on top of one of our existing rates and be applicable for an existing business that we already have that's looking for expansion. And an economic development rate would be for a brand-new business looking to locate to Smithfield. As a first step for your consideration tonight, for your discussion, I've developed a draft rider, economic development rider, in cooperation with Electric Cities that would tie in with our existing rates. We've been approached by a significant business here in Smithfield that is thinking about a major expansion, perhaps locating all of their out-of-state operations to Smithfield. And we've talked about what we can do to help make it more attractive. They were somewhat aware of our generator program, our coincident peak load shedding program. We made them quite aware of that and demonstrated to them what the advantages were, and they're very substantial. We also talked about what we can do in terms of using new smart meters, combining those meters to produce one virtual meter and reduce the number of fixed costs they pay per meter, which saves them significantly. There was the suggestion that we take a look at the possibility of economic development rider, and that's what you see for you tonight, for your consideration and discussion. This would piggyback on top of our existing rate, our LG2 rate, which is for medium-sized industries, the load shedding coincident peak rate. And it's, it's your discretion, if you were to hold a public hearing and then adopt this rider, you could apply it for anywhere from one to five years, and you can package that in a number of ways. You can do, you know, one year and expand it later. You can do five years initially. You can do it three years and expand it later. Any number of options that you would have, I think the door is open for you, how you would want to apply that. The reduction would be 1 and 1/2 cents per kilowatt hour, up to a maximum of 2 million kilowatt hours per year. There's some conditions there. One is, we'd want to see a significant commitment in terms of expansion of the business, one in terms of dollars, a total of a million-dollar investment. That could include, the generator would be eligible, the generator and all the appurtenances that we require to make that generation, that generator fully operational could be counted. And then also tied it in terms of the number of jobs. Give some suggestions to you in terms of how it might be structured, based on the number of jobs that might be brought to Smithfield, and how long that rider would last. Few other conditions is that they do have to successfully shed that load. That's not something hard to do. We have a very good track record with 12 significant commercial industrial customers on our load shedding program, and virtually all of them shed 100% of their load month in and month out, and save tremendous amounts of money in doing so. One of them, of course, is your town water plant, which saves a tremendous amount of money. For your convenience, I attached our existing LG2 rate, which is our coincident peak load shedding rate for our medium-sized industrial customers, and this rider would go on top of that. So with that, I'd like to get your thoughts, get your directions to myself and the Town Manager of what you'd like to see, if you'd like to entertain this, if you'd like it modified. Any additions, et cetera?
I'm going to start asking a couple of quick questions. If the merger goes through, we've all watched that, and our power plants are bald. We've been told that our electric rate should be regular parity with Progress Duke Energy. Is that not right?
We expect that the reduction in our wholesale power cost will be on the order such that our rates should be able to be very comparable.
Does Duke Progress offer industries?
They very definitely do not offer a load shedding coincident peak rate.
Not low shade. Do they offer one of these beginning rates to attract businesses, where they reduce the price?
They do offer, they do offer economic development riders and rates, yes.
Philosophically, I never liked these. I'll be honest about it. Existing customers who have done everything right and put the generation in and build a business here in town and are paying the normal rates, you're effectively telling them, well, we're going to give a cheaper rate to somebody who moves into town than somebody who's been here for 50 years.
Well, this would only apply to the expansion rate. That's how the rider is written.
I understand.
And we can, we can craft it any way you want. The idea would be to have both, going forward, suggestion for you would be have both a rate and a rider. The rate would be for somebody brand-new. The rider would be for an existing business, one that's already here, and this is the case we're talking about, that would like to expand. This offers them an incentive to move what they have out-of-state to Smithfield.
No, I understand the concept that you're going to give them something to entice to move to Smithfield.
But this isn't just to move to Smithfield, right? This is for any existing business, right?
For any existing business that would be covered under this rate.
Right. So if any existing business is looking to expand...
That's right.
They can fall under this rate. So it's not just businesses looking to move in.
That's right. And right now, the way this is written, and that we can certainly expand it if you'd like to, this is written for that medium-sized industrial customer, current customer we have in Smithfield. We can have riders that would apply to other classes as well, but this is a significant class that we have, that medium-sized industrial customer.
Mr. Griffin, the proposal that you, is this all the documentation that goes with this, or is it more detailed?
No, that's, in terms of what you would consider in a public hearing, it would be just the, that one page, two-sided, would be the, would be what you would consider. I put the, our existing rate there for reference sake. Now, that's all that you would have to do. Certainly, I can show you an analysis for the business that we're talking about at the right time in terms of what kind of savings we're talking about. I've not shared, shared that with the business yet, because you're only discussing the rider at this time. I have shared with them the impact of the combining their meters and the load shedding coincident peak rate that we have, showed them how significant it was, and they were quite pleased, quite impressed.
On your, going to page 114, item number two, monthly rate reduction. So the benefit would only be for, you understand it correctly, that the benefit would be for five, maximum of five years?
Maximum for five years, as it's crafted now, and of course, would be your decision as to what term you'd want to apply.
Then if you look on to paragraph number seven, it says the contract period under the schedule shall be not less than one year, and shall continue from month to month thereafter unless terminated by written notice. So the maximum of that should be, well, five years? If I'm reading it correctly, and I may not.
I think you're reading correct. I think he just put, he didn't put a termination date, because it could be one, two, or three, or five, but to put the max would be fine. Yeah, it could be under, as presented here, no more than five. But just for the record, you could go as much as seven. I mean, you go much past six or seven, you're probably, it's probably a little bit longer than you want to, you want to try to afford, because you're trying to help out in expanding business, but not lower the rate indefinitely. So that's, that five is reasonable, seven is defensive also.
And then, Ken, looking on over at the, under the large general service coordinated peak demand section, is that, is that different?
No, that's, that is your existing rate that you have for a typical medium-sized industrial customer. And the idea is, I'm proposing to you a rider that would ride on top of your existing rate.
So the rider would be pages 114 and the top of 115?
That's, that's right. I know, well, no, it'd be just all, all of 114 is the rider. Just 114 is the rider. The bottom half of 115 and 116 is our existing rate.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Griffin, I think this is a good idea. I feel like, I agree with the mayor. It's almost like that our current customer should be allowed to have some options as well. I would consider the rates are upwards of 42% to 53% higher, we learn on our public form. I feel like that, you know, anything that we can do as a town, take that into consideration. So I'll be very interested in seeing what businesses and citizens have to say in public form.
This, this rider is only for our existing businesses. If you're interested, I will go the next step and develop a rate for potential new businesses.
Well, I think what Councilman Scott is saying is probably some type of assistance, if you will, as far as electrical, for our existing businesses, even if they're not looking to expand, I think is what I was reading into.
I see.
But Councilman Scott, I will say that the Economic Development Committee, this is one thing that we discussed, not this, this exact thing, but we discussed and have been discussing ways to go to our existing customers and provide them incentives to expand here, because they are our best asset that we have. They're here, and if we can encourage them to expand, is this everything? No, but in my opinion, it's one piece of the puzzle that we can provide, and just one step that we can provide to existing customers. But I don't agree, I mean, excuse me, I agree with you that we should be looking, you know, also at our existing customers that are not looking to expand as well, and I think that's something that Ken's be looking at as well.
Well, as you know, Mr. Saviston, and you have worked very hard with Electric Cities, I think we're close to seeing successful negotiations. We will have a significant opportunity. We are also, based on your direction, talking with Electric Cities about how we can do a lower-cost cost-of-service study, and so that when we do get the new wholesale rates, you'll be able then to allocate that significant reduction to our existing classes of customers in a way that is fair, based on what their existing rates are.
I think we need to go to the next step on this. That means we'll pass it, but I think we ought to go to the next step and have a talk here.
So Ken, just one question I did have, is, it's back to the mayor's question. So, so in a couple of years, hopefully, if everything goes through with Duke Power, how will this, if, say for instance, we have a contract with a business for five years, they go ahead and enter it into a contract for five years, and then the rates are significantly different, how will that work, I guess?
Well, the, what you would have a chance to adjust with the cost-of-service study and rate study would be your existing rate classes. We have about 20 rate classes. The LG2 rate is one of those 20 rate classes for the medium-sized industrial customer. And so, when we, when you see what that savings is, then you're going to allocate that savings to each of those 20 classes in a way that you think is fair. And so, all of our rates then should come down significantly, and this rider would simply be an additional reduction on top of that. So it would be unaffected.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ken?
Thank you, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the action request to schedule a public hearing next month for adoption of this rider, ED1, to promote and encourage expansion of existing businesses.
I'll second the motion.
In discussion on that motion? Ken, is that going to be suitable for you?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Ken, your stand-up, I believe, item number three?
Yes, sir.
Budget amendment for $15,000 for water plant?
We've had, been blessed to have some very good inspections of our water plant in recent months, from a safety and efficiency and work environment standpoint. Some of those recent inspections have noted that we have lighting and heating that is very outmoded. Some of the lighting is not working properly, and the lighting and the heating are both very expensive to operate the way they are. So the suggestion was that we look into what could be done to significantly improve those, especially for our laboratory, our filter room, and our chemical room. We have talked to some vendors about pricing, and we've gotten some favorable estimates. We did not anticipate doing all this in terms of the budget that you provided to us. You did provide a contingency for us, though, to address some things like this. And so, we can get all this lighting and heating work done in all the rooms that have been suggested for about $15,000. And what I might request to you is that you allow for a budget amendment that would move money from the contingency line for water and sewer to the building repair line and maintenance line for water, for the water plant.
In discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve this budget amendment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Item number four, 2014-2015 budget advisement.
We'd like to advise you of a change that we need to make in terms of our budget to address a significant wastewater collection issue. We have 18 lift stations. Our lift station number one, which is just west of the, of the bridge on Highway 70, on the north side of the highway, is one of our major lift stations. We have two pumps there. One of those pumps is showing some early signs of seal failure. We know, unfortunately, by experience, that more significant failure can come very soon thereafter. So we would like to replace this pump. The seal failure has just shown up in the last couple of weeks. We did not see it when the budget was prepared. We had anticipated at lift station number three that we would have to replace the motor for the grinder pump. Unfortunately, now, we realize that the entire grinder pump motor assembly, pump itself, would have to be replaced. And so, instead of a $25,000 expenditure for lift station number three, it's a $50,000 expenditure. We'd like to hold off on that expenditure until later on in the year, ideally until next fiscal year if we can. We feel like it's more important to take care of this near-term potential problem that we see with lift station number one, and replace that pump. And so, we'd like your permission to make a swap in terms of capital priorities and to fund this $10,648 pump that's needed for lift station number one, and allow for that budget transfer to occur. We do have three favorable prices that we've received from local vendors. The low price comes from a vendor Clearwater out of Hickory, North Carolina. So I'd like your approval to proceed with that purchase and installation.
Mr. Griffin, where are those quotes? I didn't see those quotes. Only see your recommendation, but I don't see where those quotes were. Are they in here?
I, I, we do... Um, I, I, we do have them. We did, we did get three quotes. And the low quote is, is the one from Clearwater.
But you don't have copies in our agenda, right?
No, no, sir, I don't. I'll make sure that in the future, they are there.
Mr. Griffin, were they comparable in the service and the difference in the cost?
They're basically the same product, the companies that are, that compete very hard against one another. In fact, this company very often winds up supplying the other two companies. That's probably why they can be a little cheaper.
Yeah. The infrastructure with those lift stations, is that included in any of this repair? Don't y'all use this old SCADA system? Are you getting away from that, or is there any thoughts on that?
I'm sorry, the infrastructure, what?
That runs the pumps, the system that operates it.
We, we're okay. We believe the controls are in good shape. All that we need to do is replace the pump in this case.
So, the grinder pump, can you, can you elaborate that on a little bit, a little bit?
Well, what we will, what we'll have to do towards the end of this year, or hopefully early next year, is, is replace the whole grinder pump assembly, which is the pump and the motor for lift station number three. And we estimate that cost about $50,000. When we prepared the budget for you last year, we knew the motor itself was, was close to being towards the end, and we had estimated that motor replacement of that pump was 25,000.
So, is it currently operational?
It is, it is still operating. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So you're just basi, I mean, you're just giving your best estimate or shot, crossing your fingers and hoping that it's going to continue on correct?
We, we, long enough, you know, we, we do have, to be honest with you, we do have a lot of work in our water and sewer collection system, in our water plant, a lot, we have a lot of deferred maintenance. Thanks to you, we're, we're getting things back in shape in the water plant, and gradually getting things back in shape in the water and sewer system. But we have, we'll have a long journey to go.
So, so this is a silly question, but this submersible pump is, is needed more so now?
Yes.
And the entire assembly? I know you wouldn't be standing up there presenting it right now, but...
Ken, are we, are we getting a handle on these things, and a schedule of when we bought them, the remaining life expectancy? I know things come up that we, that are unforeseen, but do we have a handle on our equipment?
Well, we, we do have a need for a full asset management system, which would have all of our assets broken down to a reasonable, manageable level of complexity with their age, with their condition, with their functionality, their criticality, cost to repair, cost to replace. In fact, tonight, the Wooton Company is part of our application for the grant. We'll show you the first step in that direction, developing a real asset management plan. Because the interesting thing about applying for this grant, as much as we need the grant for the water intake facilities, you get more points if you have all the things in place that you should have in place if you're in extremely well-funded operation. So we had to have, we had to do the preliminary steps of having an asset management system in place. And you'll see that tonight in the next presentation. But we are, we are getting there. What we do have that is, that is quite significant, though, is we had a very old SCADA system. In fact, the parts were actually recovered from that which Johnson County discarded. And we built our SCADA system for our 18 lift stations from those discarded parts. Thanks to the funding that you provided in this budget, top priority that we put in place in this fiscal year was, we totally rebuilt the SCADA system for the, for the, for the lift stations and for our water tanks. And SCADA is supervisory control and data acquisition. So we know now, as soon as any, there's any problems with the pump, as soon as there's any problems with the lift station, we know we can respond very quickly. That's what Deener expects us to do, is to respond quickly, so we don't have a massive spill, take preventative action. And so, we, we have a much better idea about when, when problems occur, we can tackle them a little sooner with much less costs and much less problems. So we do have that. That's, that's a new element for you. We will have a demonstration for you of how that works. We're moving to the next step so that our, our superintendents have that actually on their handheld device, and they know 24, 24/7, wherever they are, the condition of each of our lift stations, and the condition of our water tanks.
Mr. Griffin, in the budget, we approved item number 7,400. It was recommended $941,000, which included this. Now, is this $10,640 an additional to what was allocated for that grinder pump?
No, sir. The request right now is, is to use the 25,000 that you allocated towards the motor for lift station number three, to use that allocation now for this pump for pump station number one.
What about number three? You said you're going to try to wait till next?
We're going to try to wait till the end of this year, and, and approach you with, if we have any, if you have any savings that we could utilize to try to get that done. Ideally, we'd be able to wait till next year, and put the full 50,000 for your consideration as part of next year's budget. We have a lot of needs in the water and sewer collection system, distribution system.
Any other questions for Ken?
I do have a question. Ken, is there anything here that we could consider not, in this, that wouldn't be an additional cost?
No, sir.
We don't have a, really don't have a choice here, guys.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to re, approve this request. I would ask that, in that motion, that we be provided an email that shows us the three bids that came in, clarify that. I would also ask that the staff be asked to send us a more in detail discussion about what condition our lift stations are in around the town, around town. I have heard in the past that they have been in really poor shape. I don't know exactly what that means, but I would like for that to be part of the motion.
I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion on, on Perry's motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to thank Paul and his staff for starting to address these lift stations, because as I said in the past, based on some conversation I've had with, with people more knowledgeable about the lift stations and myself, they have been, in their opinion, overlooked by former staff, and I think both of you for starting to address this.
I agree. All right, Ken, I still believe you're up for item number five, update on the community development block grant, application for improvement to the water treatment plant.
Yes, sir. Thank you. As you know, we're very much in, in need of making improvements at the water treatment plant, at the front end and the back end. The front end is the priority that you, that you've set, and you were very good about getting some grant funds to help do an assessment of what that is. That would be the water intake facilities. We have a problem with excessive intake of sand that causes us a problem with simply getting water into our facilities, and then causes us problems, operational problems with sand throughout our system, throughout the water treatment plant system. We are proposing to make a grant application in the order of about $2.7 million to the community development block grant program. It's a program now, with the changes in the legislature, that is administered by Deener. As you might guess, it's a highly, highly competitive program, and so, it's incumbent that we put together a, a really strong application. And Deener has asked for a tremendous number of elements go into that application. The grants go to those communities that really, really need it, and I think we qualify fairly well. But it also goes to those communities that have an operation that is, is top-notch in all respects. So you have to document that you have in place, or have just put in place, all those management procedures that are part of being a well-run utility. And so, the Wooton Company, you approved, they're assisting us. I think they've been extremely efficient at the use of their time in helping put together this very substantial application. And we have two representatives from the Wooton Company here to present to you tonight and give you an update on that application, which has been turned in, and, and hope we'll track that very closely, and we'll compete well in this extremely competitive situation.
Carl?
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ken. As he indicated, I'll try to be brief and get to the point on these. This is, we submitted the CGB application for the raw water intake. The actual grant request is for $2.585 million with $150,000 match from the town. That was submitted on October 2nd, so that was last Thursday. This is the submittal here. It's about 13 sections. This is how big a, a grant application is these days. Smithfield scored 93 points, and basically, that's a pretty good score, but it's, what I would call, it's, you know, on the margin. So, as part of the application, we also submitted the PER, the Water Raw Facilities PER, which was, which I presented the results to about, may, maybe jog in your memory, about six to eight months ago, back before March, actually, in February. We had a meeting, we talked about what that whole project was about. The reason we submitted this PER with the CGB application is to say that the town of Smithfield has taken steps to be ready to go if we're, if you're awarded the grant. So it's a way to try to tell the, the people reviewing the grants and evaluating the grants that Smithfield has already taken a lot of measures to, to look into this problem, and they've gone as far as making one of these engineering reports that outlines exactly what needs to be done. In addition, as Ken was talking about, on, another, there's another set of points for water, for a water asset management plan, and we worked on that at the same time period as we were working on the application. What you have right now is, I've, I've given Ken a report, a water asset management report, which, if anybody want to have it later, I can provide it to you. And what that report basically covers is, this, the strategy in this one was to make sure that we covered all the points that the CGB application people wanted to see. What we did was, we took the CADs, CAD maps and other maps that were available from the community, and we got them onto the GIS system. And what they require is that you have a number for each of your assets, and that you can say how old each of them are, and what kind of condition they're in. So we met those minimum requirements. So that is, that was submitted with the grant application, the, the water asset management plan. If Smithfield, so right now, it's, it's, it's very competitive, like Ken says. I would say you're, you're competitive in there, you're, what I would call, potentially on the bubble. So just, just to have that, that's how I would characterize it at this point. If Smithfield is selected for the grant, you have three years from the date of notice to get the project done. We hope to hear on the grant selection in late this month or in early in November. And what, what the people in the CGB portion of Deener do is, they make the recommendations of who should get the grants. And then there's a, another board called the State Water Infrastructure Authority Board, who does the final approval in December. That's, that's the schedule. They meet next December 11th. So, we're, we're keeping our pulse on that, and we'll, we'll let you know what happens in terms of, of the grant awards. One thing I guess I would recommend is that, I've seen the three-year period here that we're talking about in terms of if you're awarded a grant, you're going to have to move really quick as a council and as a, as a town on this, because there's a number of lengthy regulatory requirements, approvals that need to be done. I don't know if you remember from the, from the presentation I did before, but there's a, a kind of approval called a reclassification, because we're moving your intake approximately 100 to 150 feet upstream. They, you have to go, it triggers a regulatory procedure where you have to reclassify things, and typically, that procedure can take up to two years. I recently had a meeting with them and, with representatives from Deener, and we thought we could get that down to a year and a half. So if you are selected for the grant, I guess one of the, one of the things that I would recommend is that the town maybe have a, have a meeting with their local representative and with, with higher folks up in Deener to see what we can do to streamline that reclassification process. That would be a recommendation I make. Other than that, as part of that reclassification, you'd also have to do what they call an environmental assessment. So that's another report that would basically look at if there's any environmental impacts on moving this outfall, on moving this intake, I mean, 150 feet upstream. So you'd have to, you'd have to do another report study, sorry, sorry to tell you, but that's, that's what it would require, assuming that you, if you got the grant. Touching on one other subject, Ken has mentioned that there, there are some, there's problems on the front of the water treatment plant and problems on the back end. The back end refers to the sludge system. We, we have arranged to have a vendor come out and do a pilot study on a different kind of dewatering system. And that would be, the actual vendor will come out and do that, bring out the equipment and do that basically at no cost to, to the town. So that's, that's in the works right now. Eventually, we'll probably want to take a look at their results, and that would probably require some evaluation by Wooton Company in conjunction with Ken to determine how well that test went. I guess as a last thing, we were talking a little bit about asset management and how you can track your work orders, your, you know, when the pumps were put in, when were they last maintained. We are going to have a quick presentation this Friday about a system that we've developed to do that. Do I have any, any questions? So we're, basically grants in, and we're waiting to hear.
And, and, excuse me if I missed it, but how long did you estimate it would take for us to hear back, yea or nay?
We're hoping that the, they've indicated that they would do it in late October, early November, is what we're, is what we're hearing. You know, they, that's their schedule at this point, as far as we know. Now, they, like I said, they would normally have this recommendation, a lady or has to be finally approved by the SWIA board. Now, the last time that board met was for the previous grant applications in the spring. And I know, I know for a fact that in one case, there was a, a local representative that, that, in any case, that, that, that procedure can, there can be changes within that, what that board does versus what's necessarily recommended by some of the staff at Deener. So it's really up to that board at the end.
Carl, you mentioned upstream, moving the intake upstream, like 150 feet. I remember in the presentation you gave us, there were several options. Were some of the other ones more comparable to saving, in efforts of saving your time? I mean, if you've got a three-year deadline and a two-and-a-half study, I can see how that could be a challenge.
That's a, that's a good question. We did have one other option where we looked at, at putting maybe a sand removal system between the existing intake and the pumps, the intake pumps at the plant. However, that really wouldn't solve your, your intake clogging problem at all. It would just be able to prevent the pumps from being clogged, but it wouldn't solve your, your problem out in the river itself. So that's why that one was eliminated. The, you have a dredging moratorium, you know, for, from February to June, so you, theoretically, you can't do any dredging there. Right now, you're dredging four to five times a year on average to keep that intake clean. So even if you put something, if you left the intake where it is, and you put something in between the intake and the pumps, it wouldn't solve that problem.
It does concern me a little that that might be a problem in this grant. I, I didn't remember us discussing that potential problem. And I don't know what this board considers, but if they're looking at us to be ready to go, readiness to go if the grant's awarded, and then they see that we've got to do a two-year study to get a water intake moved 150 feet, that could, seems like it could jeopardize our chances.
Well, it's not necessarily a two-year study. There's a, there may be a reclassification process. We can do that EA very quickly, in fact. And in the meeting I had with some of the representatives from Deener, they have what they call a, they have some of their staff go out and determine whether that movement has any impact basically on the water supply. And, and those, the two people that were there indicated that they wouldn't have any problem with that portion of it. It's really the main part that is of importance in that reclassification system, is that you, you have what they call that critical area, which is the half a mile ups, it's like a half a mile pie shape from the intake, and that would move up 100 feet, and that might capture some land that's not currently in that critical zone. And then you have to look at, at zoning ordinances and stuff for that. And what I'm trying, the argument I would try to make with, with Deener, maybe some people higher up in Deener, is that actually, this, you know, we're moving it up 100 feet, but we're really only doing that because you can't do the construction where the existing intake is. You have to move it to, to put, to put another one in. In, in essence, you're kind of stuck with that situation. In essence, you're kind of stuck with that situation. So that would be, you know, the argument I would make. But it is an issue, but it's something we can work through. But I guess what I'm getting at is we would have to, once a grant, if we're, notice that the grant award is given to the town, we're going to have to move fast to get that process started. That's the main idea, the main point.
Carl, you mentioned that we received the score 93, or received 93 points. That was marginal. What would you constitute? What kind, what number of points does it require to get in that high probability?
A high probability score for this round is probably about 100.
Is it 100, okay.
The last round, it changes every round. It just depends on the number of applicants. So it's hard to say, even if it was so many points in the last round, it doesn't mean that's what it's going to be in this round.
Right, okay.
But I would say if you had scored 100 or more points, you'd be much, much more likely to get it. But like I said, we've heard that, you know, for this round, you know, the range of 90 to 100 is probably the range. That's what we've heard from Deener on this round. So that's why I'm saying if you're getting in the hundreds, you know, you're probably more likely to get it. But the range that they gave us was 90 to, you know, 90 to 100. Just to give you an idea, that's the last time they, the last submittal had 67 applicants in the spring. We probably anticipate a similar number now.
Was it comparable size projects or cost wise?
Yeah, they were pretty comparable in size from what I remember. Hope there's no more questions. Appreciate it.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
I would like to say that, guys, this is the tip of the iceberg here on this water treatment plant. You know, you're looking at $2.73 million, which we need to spend, but that just addresses the water intake. That doesn't address producing water. And, you know, we're looking at probably at least another $6 million to get our water treatment facility up to running at full capacity, much less the opportunity to increase our capacity by almost a million gallons. So I just want you to remember that this, we do have an opportunity for a revenue-producing facility there, which it is, but this is just the start of this process. Because if we're going to maintain that water treatment facility, we're going to have to spend considerable amount more money. And along with that can come some more revenues, but this is just the start.
All the joys of ownership. Just like an old house. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All, item number six, discussion of recommended changes to the unified development ordinance for signage for the Smithfield crossings area.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. What staff is coming to you with tonight is a request on page 123 of your agenda. And we would like the council to take into consideration amendment to the sign ordinance and direct staff to go back to the planning board and present it. I'll briefly explain it to you. Ever since the UDO was developed, it only allows for one primary sign on a property, period. It does not allow for any dual signage for ground signs. This has become a problem on corner lots, particularly over the years. But now we have a new situation created with the closure of the roads at the Pottery and Allen Center. We have dual frontage roads out there where the Zaxby's, Ruby Tuesday's, CCs and Checkers all had frontage, which is now in effect, the frontage is the rear yard now. So their signage is in the wrong yard space. So listening to the, from the merchants out there, it's probably time to go ahead and correct the situation that occurred in the ordinance years ago that was not anticipated. And what we'd like you to do, there's some considerations there that we allow for two signage is one primary of about 75 square feet and the other one in your documentation, it has two question marks. I think the, we were doing research on other communities. It appears that that's, that square footage is somewhere in the 35 to 50 square foot on the secondary sign. But to actually go and allow two ground signs per properties with dual frontages. And the process that this normally runs through with the UDO, you would direct staff to make a recommendation of changes to the planning board. It will go to the planning board at their next meeting. From there, it will come back to you for your final consideration the following month. And so about 60 days from now, the ordinance would actually be changed. So this is not just specifically for those residents that I mentioned earlier, but actually it corrects, it corrects a problem for us in other areas of town too, where we'd have considerations to be given there.
Paul, this does not affect a signage on the building?
No, this is just ground.
This is the ground signs on my car?
Well, currently the ordinance allows for, on corner lots or dual frontage lots, two signs anyway for wall signs, but it does not for ground signs.
And Mayor, as Mr. Mayor indicated, we would like to help the businesses that are on the Smithfield crossings road there. They've probably been the most vocal, just giving the new routing with that. And if at all possible, depending on how we move forward tonight, we would like to at least start considering applications so that, you know, it's going to be a two to three-month process to really do it on the UDO the proper amendment way. If we could start processing those amendments with them understanding that it'll be what the ordinance ends up, you know, the final adoption. A few decisions tonight, if you can give us some direction, we could process those applications early, try to accommodate those businesses as soon as possible. And certainly any others that have dual frontage in other parts of town would be fine, but we just want to accommodate those businesses as much as possible. I would say, looking at it and having considered it in the other jurisdictions, that if you went with a 36-ish square footage max for the secondary sign, that's about half the size as the max square footage is the main sign. And then also, and need some direction from Mr. Ambler on this, on the height, at one point it says six feet, Paul, and then the other one says DOT goes with 30 inches, two and a half feet, basically. Are you saying that the DOT basically on a secondary sign, they limit you to the 30 inches?
If it's within that site triangle, it has to be less than.
Only that site triangle?
Only within the site triangle.
So outside of that, do they have a different height of six feet?
It would go to six feet. What we currently allow on the primary sign, it can go to six feet if it's outside the site triangle. And the site triangle is an imaginary line that's drawn down the roadway 70 feet and up the edge of the driveway 10 feet. So for a car pulling up to enter into the street from the parking lot, there is nothing in that site triangle that interferes with his view of oncoming traffic. And so that's the reason why we want to keep it low if the sign's within the site triangle. If he backs it out of the site triangle, then they can go as high as six feet with the sign.
And I recommend we follow that. That seems like good advice. Again, the site triangle on the road in question here particularly will be an issue. But I think keeping in mind that, you know, the large signs they have on one side, that's a large sign. I mean, frankly, I'm not sure. I mean, everyone can argue bigger the better. But I think having the smaller sign on the lesser frequented frontage area will serve all the businesses very well. And if you think specifically with that Smithfield crossings road, I mean, they get the big signs on the front on Highway 70. On the backside, I mean, it's almost just an entrance sign, to be honest with you, with, you know, a better indication of the advertisement with their logo, et cetera, on there. I think the smaller sign will serve them very well. And if we have that direction or whatever the council decides is the right sign, or size, sizes, we can move forward and go ahead and start processing and getting it ready.
Just a little bit of scale factor to give you. I'm sure most of you have seen the new sleepy sign that's adjacent to the McDonald's and the old Blockbuster site. That sign meets the current sign ordinance as a primary sign. It's six foot high. It has 75 square foot of signage. That's a pretty big sign in relative terms. The secondary sign that Mr. Savison referred to could be as tall as that sign in half the square footage. So it's still going to be a fairly significant sign. For example, a sheet of plywood is 32 square feet, four by eight.
So, Mr. Ambler, just one question. Maybe Paul, you said we've been approached by the number of the businesses and I want to commend both Paul and, both Paul's, planning department for bringing this before us and cooperating with the business owners to try to get this before the council as quickly as possible. I think that shows a true partnership. But question is, real quickly, is the square footage have, of the sign, have we heard from the owners themselves, the businesses out there? Have they given any recommendations as to what size sign?
I had invited the owners to be, some of the owners to be here tonight. For whatever reason, they're not here. I guess it's a business related. But they will all be sent notices in the public hearing. The planning board will hold a public hearing. They'll have opportunity there. And then you, as the council, will hold another public hearing before you actually consider the amendment change.
And they can have some input at this if we approve it.
Most definitely, as well as any other citizen within the town.
Exactly, okay. All right. Thank you.
I would move that we approve the request and for purposes of preparing, a proposal is up to 40 square feet.
Up to 40?
Up to 40.
Second. All right. Any discussion? Paul, you said you could expedite this whole process?
Yes, we'll take it to the next planning board meeting, which will not be the one, they've already met this month already. They met last Thursday night. So it'll be their November meeting. It will come to you in December.
Bring it to us expeditiously, please.
That's as quick as we can get it there.
Any discussion? All in favor, CL?
No.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Discussion of West Smithfield Beautification Project, item number seven.
The purpose of this is to give you an update and also present to you a schedule of a timeline to get it to the point that we can actually submit to DOT. As you're probably aware, Councilman Harris, the Appearance Committee member of Bob Worsch and Lenny Works of our Public Works Department have over the last few months been working their due diligence by contacting all the adjacent property owners. I believe Mr. Harris, Councilman Harris gave you a report on that last month. Response by the property and business owners has been very positive. Therefore, through the hard work of staff and the council, it is now able to proceed with the next phase by preparing larger-scale drawings, which are required by DOT, to show the detail of the location of the proposed drive access points and the location of the proposed landscape allowance. In order to prepare the plan, staff is presently in the process of mapping the existing conditions, including property lines, structures, existing poles, drives, signs, utilities and other physical limitations that will place constraints on where the landscaping can be located. Once the plan has been prepared, as in preliminary form, it will be presented to council for your review and comment. Once council has approved the preliminary plan, staff will meet with each affected property owner so that they can see specifically what is proposed and what affects the landscaping will have on their properties. After receiving comment from the owners, the plans will be finalized and presented to council for final review and comment. Once council is satisfied with the proposed landscape improvements, council will need to pass a resolution, which we will draft for you, for your consideration, asking NC DOT to approve and assist in the landscape improvements. Once NC DOT approves the plan, they will be taking the lead in the project from that point. So what we propose now is to complete the base mapping by the middle of this month, move forward and prepare the preliminary landscape plan between the middle of the month and the first of next. At your November the 4th council meeting, we would present the plan to you for your review and consideration. And then after that, we will meet and meet with the property owners, receive their comments, incorporate and finalize the plan, and then bring it back to you at the December meeting with submittal immediately to DOT upon your approval and passing of the resolution. So if you have any questions, stand here to try to answer them for you.
Need a motion on that?
No.
But I can tell you, it's a huge job. It does make Smithfield look a lot better.
Absolutely. Thank you for what you.
How long will it take the DOT to, do you have an idea what it may take them?
Councilman Scott, their DOT is gonna, there's several different pots of money that this will be coming from. Some of it is immediately available and it's from the bridge that was, there's money left over from landscaping from the bridge that will be immediately available. And then there'll be some others depending on their funding cycles. And I'm not exactly sure when those will be, but it will come over the course of probably an entire year. It won't be all at one time.
Do y'all have, in your project, do you have different phases planned so it could start without having to wait for all the things to be available?
What we'd like to do is develop the overall master plan first and get DOT, well, first for council to envision the overall master plan and then work with DOT. And then at that time, it will probably be broken into phases. Because not till we get to that point, we don't know, we got to know what money we can work with so we know how to break it into phases.
Any other questions for Paul? Paul, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next item, Paul Savison's going to talk about the work sessions.
Mayor, the September regular meeting, Councilman Scott suggested that the council consider having an additional meeting based on the nature of a work session sometime during the month. The clerk polled council and those that were responsive, which was most council members, I think she heard from, were in agreement that we should and could do this. The idea presented, again, subject to your discretion, is to schedule a meeting, two weeks, the Tuesday, two weeks before a regular meeting as our baseline meeting date at 6:00 PM, if that time works for council, and have that as a work session. The work session would not be a meeting to take action at an item, at least not in most cases. And if something comes up along those lines, we'd have to convert it to a special meeting. But in general, just to have a discussion, work session, meeting about different items that we can talk about for the future, whether it's planning or just items that we're going through a bid process to update you on, and have a little bit more of a casual discussion about that as opposed to a discussion that involves a decision taking place that same night. That was the, I think, the gist of the intent of those meetings. So with that in mind, the only exception would be if there are, say there's a month where there isn't much to discuss at that meeting, subject to consultation with the mayor. If the mayor decides that it may be this month, in October, November or December, it's not necessary, or because December is just a bad time, we don't hold that work session, we'd inform council we not have it that month. That way you don't feel like you're just showing up for a meeting for, and trying to find items to put on there if they don't really need to be discussed in a separate form. And I think that's actually a good, a good call because I've seen this work session approach work very well. But I've also seen it forced sometimes where you really didn't have to have one, you were going through the motions. If that occurs, we can just not have it, hold it till next month and we'll have enough to talk about at that meeting. But with that, the clerk has provided you with what would be the dates. The mayor pointed out that obviously Tuesday, December 23rd is a date. That's the technical, two weeks before the January meeting, which is probably not a good date. And we would certainly move those around holidays if it comes at an odd time during the year at any time. But with that, just need some council input if y'all want to move forward on this. And also ask for a little bit of direction, you know, depending on the item or if in general, if this is really, obviously it's a meeting up into the public, but from the staff standpoint, is this just going to be council, clerk and the manager, basically? Or do you want other staff members on an as-needed basis? Or what you're feeling is in that regard? And that's all I have from my end, but just need some direction from the council on that.
I personally just like having mayor, council and manager, clerk, and as you stated, the needed department heads.
As needed?
As needed.
Okay.
So we are definitely set on Tuesdays though? Tuesday? Monday?
Is that a good day for everybody?
No.
Well, with all of us, it's going to be tough to find a day everybody can make. It's a grand experiment.
a grand experiment. Let's, let's start trial. We'll just change it after a couple of months.
I think what will be helpful, and I know we don't get our agendas until a week before, but I think what might be helpful too is if we have a good idea of what's gonna be on the agenda. I know we won't know everything, but.
Well, I, I thought that was the, one of the major purposes of this meeting was to look at agenda items. So if we're not gonna have the agenda items at these meetings, it's probably.
Yeah. And you'll, we'll have a general idea, but I mean, in reality, we'll have a rough idea. And I can tell you right now, a few things are gonna be on the December meeting, but not many.
Right.
And that two-week period is gonna be, you know, at some point, we get it out a week early, which in the scheme of things is actually very early to get the agenda out. It doesn't seem like it sometimes, but it really is. Two weeks is possible to have a forecast of what will be on there. And some, sometimes things are just, we don't know. The planning board isn't ready or hasn't had a meeting yet. Some things we don't know yet. So it's not like we're just waiting to the last second. Some of them, you just don't know if it's a finished project yet. But I think we'll at least have a heads up in terms of what may be on the meeting, if that will be helpful, and give you kind of a forecast of what's on there. But at some point, you know, there's a, there's kind of a key timeframe in there. I mean, I can't see this as more general discussion about things that won't come up for two weeks to two months that we're working on. That would be the time we'll spend.
When, when does the planning board meet?
The first Thursday of the month, so two times a year, the planning board is gonna meet before the town's end.
Mayor, I'd like to thank the manager for putting consideration here. And I think it's something we definitely should try. I understand that other council may not be able to be here every day, every meeting. But I think it's good that we consider this and also, you know, look at it from a team building approach with our manager or council and, you know, staff as needed as Councilman Williams mentioned. So thank you. I make a motion we approve the proposal.
I've got a change of time. Yes, 6:30 if we can.
Is that amenable?
Yes, absolutely.
Will you amend your motion to do it 6:30?
6:30.
And I was, Salma's doing this.
I mean, why don't we just schedule a call?
Please.
I mean, first we have a discussion. You can send out an email and have a call, a conference call about it.
And Salma's doing this. I talked to Mayor Oliver. It's really not as much about discussing the upcoming agenda for, for Salma as it's about just kind of the bigger topics that they wanna go to next year or whatever. It's just planning more than workouts.
I get that. I don't agree with what you're saying, but that's, I mean, it's just, it's just, if you wanna do it, we don't always have to do it in a conference call.
And I've attended meetings by, by phone. I mean, you can do that.
I don't want it to be this.
Paul, can we possibly consider having it where council can call in by conference call, but still have the meeting? Can we put that in?
As part of the meeting, yeah, you could do that. I don't think, if I remember correctly, it's a little strange, but if I remember correctly, the, the rules of it, I don't think that person can vote. There were some, that's come up before. No, but just in theory, shouldn't be, but I know these things go to, you can add stuff. But in theory, you could participate on the phone. You could participate, but there's some questions about whether you get credit for attending the meeting, that sort of thing. Not that that matters, but you could certainly have dialogue and have a phone conference. I guess the idea would be to have, we could have, like we do in our budget sessions, have more of a work session, you know, on tables on that floor, and have a phone set up that would be, you know, a conference call phone. I think we can do that in here, phone wise.
Alford, vote.
I've got a, I've got a motion. Does somebody make a second?
He did.
All right. Do we have any more discussion? We're gonna move to, you're, you're on a minute here. Motion to 6:30?
Absolutely.
All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right. Let me start over again. All, all in favor, raise your hands. All opposed, raise your hands. Motion carries. All right. Paul Savison, item number nine, discussion on IT analysis by Alpha Numeric.
Mayor, as you know, we've met with Alpha Numeric on several occasions about some upgrades to our IT. And what you've got before you are some of the, basically a summary of what they've presented. They gave a written analysis and then a slightly more detailed one with regard to actual budgetary numbers toward the back of the documents that you've been provided. And what I did is I summarized, I took their table out of their documents, which is what's on page 129 with the pricing. And I actually made some adjustments based on, they used some numbers that were in terms of actual quantity that we didn't need to. And we talked about it with Alpha Numeric and they were okay with that, changing some of the, some of those numbers in terms of like workstations and email users and those sort of things. Basically, they did a pretty good analysis of kind of top to bottom of our IT departments. They gave us a pretty good detail. You've got six items there from workstations and my workstations. That's basically just desktop computers, to be honest with you, monitors, a PC uses. They recommended replacing most of the ones we have. Rough cost is a thousand dollar per station, which frankly, I think is a little bit high, but that's just a ballpark figure. And of the, their recommendations, the first three, the workstation, the email, and the cloud, which gives us lots of advantages in terms of user, usability, communication, storage primarily. One of their key findings on the email was just that we have to kind of person by person retain our email, which is not the best way to do it. The cloud storage will allow it, the system just to store emails so that, you know, because they are public records and they need to be protected as a public record basically, instead of just saving it on your email system, which become, can become a little bit haphazard depending on the user's ability to do so and their, their, their attention to that detail. So that's one of the many advantages you get to the email and the cloud. There were a couple of different options there. The Office 360 was the one they, they referred to, which seemed like a good system. There's another Google one that's out there too. This one seemed to be cost effective, but also maybe a little bit more user friendly than the Google system. As you can see, the cost is approximately $600 per month for all the users using 50 users. And the setup fee, which I think is still probably somewhat flexible, they indicated would be five to seven, $5,000 to $7,680. And I think you should consider that also. I think that's probably one of our biggest needs right now, the, the email even more so than the workstation. The number three, the servers on the cloud or in the cloud, I think we need some more work on that before I'm ready to commit to recommending that. And as noted in the, the column, I think we need a few more details on that. I think it's somewhere that we will end up going. I'm not sure I'm prepared to go there just yet, but I can research that depending on what council's direction and feeling is on that and bring that back to you. The last four, I think need more work or do not need. The network switches, not a big cost there. I just need a little bit more investigation there. I think that's something, again, that we will, will use and can, we can benefit from. But I need to understand that a little bit better and find out what some of the other options are and really see how that's gonna, what's gonna be the, the turning point with that with regard to our servers versus other uses where we really will need those network switches versus where we are right now. The next one, the wireless, review access location, that's a later date. And we don't have cost on that, so that's clearly a later date. The managed services, that's basically having them manage all of our services. That's a very high cost. I do not think we need that at all right now. I think that would be not money wisely spent. I think we can do the rest of this in-house, do it ourselves. And with the email, for instance, there'll be a company hosting that for us and doing that work for us that we can call. I do not see and cannot justify any managed services at this point. Maybe in the next two or three years, we can revisit that. And also, that was a high cost. So four, five, and six, I say we do not need or need to investigate more at this point. Number three needs a little bit more time. One and two, I think we need to, we need to pursue. And if the council agrees, what I'll do is I'll go back through in a little bit more detail and provide you with some written actual options, although there is one with the email services that's in your packet tonight. But I can give you some better workstation estimates. These are just ballpark numbers that I provide to you tonight. So if you, if you agree on one, two, either of those options, I can bring you back more of the detail specific. I think the email is pretty specific as it is. The workstations, again, I think I can come in with a cheaper price than what's presented there as the, their ballpark budget estimate. Mayor, I know there's a lot of information in there. So if there's any questions, I can certainly try to track those down for you, you know, consult with Alpha Numeric or our own staff about that and try to give you some feedback. But I wanted to give you this first run, this first feedback on what, what we did see. And, you know, kind of good news, bad news. I mean, I think we're getting a lot of things done with what we have, but we do need to kind of ramp up a little bit on some of these basic, just foundational kind of hardware systems and our email system and how we store our emails today.
So Paul, Alpha Numeric, will they be providing any services outside of this, this initial analysis? I mean.
No, that, the last one, number six, the managed services, you know, obviously, I mean, you know, and they're in business as, as any good software advisor is, you know, to try to obtain services. And they, they provide good, solid IT services to a lot of companies and do a good job. So nothing against them. I just don't think we need that where we are right now. So if we went that option, we would probably, we could consider them or we could rebid that managed services, which frankly, is how we should probably go. That's a pretty expensive service. I would feel much better to, to bid that service to the general, you know, business, private sector, see what they come in with. We hired Alpha Numeric to do an analysis, which they've done. So I don't think the analysis means they get the managed services if you're all ready to vote tonight for that. I think that would be another step down the road, you know, when we feel like we need that and go out and third party it and get proposals on that. And again, that's why I'm not even, I'm not near that managed services approach at all right now. And I know the mayor and Mr. Scott have been in a few of these meetings, and I think they understand the, the need, especially for the email, that, that became pretty, pretty clear. And you see that in the, the recommendations too.
Yeah. Well, when we went through the, the investigation a couple of years ago, it became pretty evident that we need this type of service to be able to, to maintain our emails and so forth. So I think that was one of the recommendations out of the audit and something that we had discussed at that time. So I would highly recommend that as well.
Mayor, I'd like to address the manager. Thank you, Paul, for bringing this information. I know it's something you've been looking at for a while. And I too understand and have looked at this very detailed. I would ask that, first, I'd like to state that I think that this is a handful of tools to make our employees more efficient. And two, it helps us meet public records laws in many cases which we're not currently meeting. I would ask that I'd make, I'd make a motion that we approve items one and two with the consideration of the cost that you've stated that you could possibly find the analysis of the cost for number one. And for number two, I would ask you please to look at the Google system before you purchase, because I think it's relatively cheaper and offers a little bit more service. My concern is, is we're looking at our GIS and Google has a Google map engine. It actually would come with that service and we could put those layers in there and would be efficient in all areas. And also, as some of these things, the $17 user a month has a lot of features, but Google offers most of those, but not all. And it also has the office interface as well. So I, I make a motion to approve items one and two, obviously with you getting the consideration of reports. And please consider Google before you went the $17 a user.
I've met these guys. It's, it's, Chris is right. This is all sorely needed. I mean, we really need it. And this is, the first two are the easiest and cheapest things to do right off the bat. And we did talk about Google. I've got a motion on the floor. Any second, a second on that motion?
Got a question.
Well, sure.
Paul, the items number one and two, would that be within our, and we, we'd be able to purchase that within our current budget? That you just.
We've got, yeah, and I've tried to go through and find out, you know, the, the server and different stuff and got it in different words as opposed to the way they've got it. I think it depends on what that workstation comes back as. We've got about $15,000 to $20,000, I'd say, budgeted for different server email improvements, that kind of thing. So if it was actually $28,000 plus installation, we probably would not. I just think I can, I can get it a little bit cheaper than what's there. So we'll be very close. And so what I would probably do, to be honest with you, if, if inclination goes one and two, you know, look as hard as I can. I'll probably just bring it back to you with an amount if I'm within the budget. Say it's budget. Are you okay with this? The final thing, again, whether it's Google 360. If it's outside the budget, say, hey, we need another $5,000 to do this and, and go forward. And some of the monthly amounts may be, may be the, maybe the difference, it, it may not be. I mean, the $600 a month is not a big deal. And I think with Google, it'll be even less. So we'll probably be okay there. But that's probably will be my intent, is to bring it back to you one more time. I think we'll be really close. Again, I think I can do the workstations cheaper than what's there, and that might just bring us within the budget amount. So that's something we have to look at.
How does one and two, or any combination of the six items fit within Alpha Numeric's strong recommendation? On page 133, that Smithfield moves its network and infrastructure to a hosted, internal cloud-based service where it will reap the benefits of current hardware, virus protection, patch management, security, and monitoring of the network immediately and every time.
I think two, part of that is email on the cloud. And three, the servers on the cloud is more, I think, to point with what you're pointing there, you're pointing there to, Mr. Ashley. So it's, it's a step in that direction. It's a step in that direction. And, and luckily, number three is not that expensive. We just need more time to consider it. And again, the setup fee there was actually pretty high, I thought, as opposed to the, the per month estimate, the $2,000 per month. So that, that is an expense that gets up there. That's the real, that's the real step that would, that would answer that criticism more than anything. The email is a little bit, but if you look at most of our work and most of our documents are obviously not done through email, or not done on email or through email, that's more of the storage, primarily our, our utility billing accounts and those sort of documents. And that's what will be protected. As you know, we had an incident last year where we lost some data that was, that had to be on the cloud, would have been preserved. So that's a big step. So again, I wasn't quite ready on that one, but that would, that would answer, I think, that criticism more than any.
I guess my concern is if we proceed with one or one and two, then we decide later that we need to go three and four if they're not compatible, or we're hurting ourselves by piecemealing.
No. I said to me, Paul, Alpha Numeric's a good company. They make their money selling services. If we sign up for Google and pay $50 per employee or Microsoft 360 program, which is basically the same thing, they're all inexpensive. Everybody's gone to this kind of stuff. So when you want your emails and all that stuff, everybody's on the same system. They don't make much money off of that stuff. They've, they've got to sell you on the bigger services for them to justify what they're doing. So if we just pick off the lower stuff and keep our own employee in house, we probably save a lot of money.
So when you're talking about 28 workstation, you're talking about 21.
Pieces.
Hardware.
Okay. That would be networked together, but it's still.
Well, they currently, I mean, they're networked through the internet somewhat, but they're not, they're not a true network. But at Trac and at Water Plant and a bunch of other places, it's just a bunch of rural, eight-year-old PCs. They just threw $1,000 per PC, which Paul's right, we're gonna come in way under.
But I've sent you, they did monitors and everything to go with it.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a full.
That's right. That's a full station.
Full station.
Includes that, yeah.
But the biggest thing is, is getting our emails and stuff on a server, in the cloud, professionally managed. We're not even saving the emails like we're supposed to be saving right now, which was an issue when we need to pull so much fast. Is there a pair?
You know, I have Microsoft 3, I think it's 365.
Yeah, 365.
I don't know what 360 is, but you know, one of the things that will allow you to do is you can, you can, you can post attachments or information into a cloud. And anybody that's connected to that in the city can go there and see it. You don't necessarily have to send everybody email or whatever. But I've not looked at this. I was not in on these meetings. But my suggestion would be to, I, I'd like to look at this a little further, to make sure that these costs are in line with things like email on the cloud. I'm not, I'd like to, now, I think we're gonna look at this with maybe shop around a little bit.
Yeah, I think, as the mayor said, they've done a pretty good job. And I'll be honest with you, it seems to me like it's coming down between the Google or the 360 choice. I mean, I, I mean, we've talked to other local governments and other companies, and it almost seems like it's a preference. And I understand where Mr. Scott's coming from. I mean, Google's very popular. I'm pretty sure the county uses it. I'm not sure on that feature that you just mentioned, which I, I agree with you, Mr. Harris. I love that feature. But I think Google's got a very similar one, if I'm not mistaken. And Mr. Scott may know that allows you to work on a central document that way too, but.
I, I know I'm not paying anywhere near this, and I have a much smaller company than the city of Smithfield. But I'd really just like to have some time to, to check on this to see what my tech guy in Atlanta thinks.
Yeah.
I agree. It's a perfect thing for the workshop discussion before we try to go.
The, the other thing I will mention on this managed services, I know that. The, the other thing I will mention on this managed services, I know that conversation, I had a conversation or two with these folks. In fact, I met with the mayor, I think, on one occasion prior to this all starting. You know, one of the things that was brought up is we're paying too much for our IT services. In other words, we're paying our employees that are running IT too much. I think that may be a little convoluted because I think one of our people who's showing as the head of our IT department really doesn't work in the IT department all the time. He's bouncing all over the town doing stuff I don't know. But I would add that if we're going to, if we're going to look at this, I'd like to know managed services, a little more detail about that. You know, what, what is it currently costing us? And, and what is this $6,800? Because I, I don't, I don't see a lot of information here. So I, I don't feel comfortable with voting on any of that.
I, I think it's a good idea because it's, it's a very complicated project and you can go 100 different ways. We want to move this to the workshop.
I agree. That's why I'm in the motion to discuss this further at a workshop.
Perry, just, just to point out one thing, you were, you were mentioning amount you're paying a month. So this would be $12 per user is what it is. That's where the $600 comes from. So it's $12 per user at 50 users. So it's $12 per user. So I don't know how that relates to, to your, what you were talking about, but it just has a...
And that's actually an average cost too. Some were like $7 per user and then a handful would be 16 or 17 per user, but only like 10 or 12. And so we just took an average cost there. So some were actually, I think the line share would be like $7 per user.
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to do sort of check.
No, I agree.
It's probably fine. I'd just still like to look.
Better safe than sorry. All right, we, we, we're just going to table this for right now. I don't need to vote to do that.
All right. Talk to the bring on terror. That's good.
Paul, can you see if you can get the, or I, I can even research if you need me to have your staff run the Google stuff so we just kind of compare.
On the Google side, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'm going to, I'm going to open the meeting to council members' comments. Is there any council member who'd like to press any ideas or comments?
Well, I would, Mr. Mayor. My monthly report regarding something we need to get behind us. Number one, I spoke with the DA's office today. Do they have the transcripts of the depositions yet?
I'm sorry?
Does the DA's office have the transcripts of the depositions yet?
No, I, I've copied them and our attorney has to get, through our protective order, has to get a release from the other parties. They have not gotten that yet. So I've, I've got it and I've consulted with the DA's office to let them know where they stood and which they were okay with. But I, I've provided it, I've got it on a flash drive, ready to turn over as soon as we get the okay from our own, our own attorneys, which I think we'll get. But they have not obtained that release from the other two attorneys or whatever their consent is or notice or whatever they need from the other, the other parties.
Other thing, Paul, I'd like for you and I to get together within the next, before the next meeting to make sure my numbers mesh with your numbers regarding what I'll call the damages to the town. And also to get an updated figure on the attorney's fees that the town has expended since day one. And also, I know we talked about this earlier when we got approval. I wanted to, you and I to interview two current employees based on some deposition testimony and also consider the possibility of contacting a former employee to interview her as well. So if you and I can work together on that.
Okay.
I do want to get a report, as I indicated earlier, my goal was to hopefully all of us can put this behind us before Thanksgiving of this year. And anyway, I appreciate your willingness to work with me on that. The other, other comments I wanted to make is, as many of you and many of you citizens do, you talk to a lot of people. And the one thing, I won't say, I guess it does concern me about Smithfield. Smithfield is an absolutely wonderful place to live. It is a wonderful place to be, to raise your children and, and just to be here. And the thing I see that's hurt Smithfield the most over the past, I'll say, five years has really been a negative attitude. And, and I'm guilty of that. But I think what we have to do is we have to have a positive attitude and, and portray that attitude and portray our love of Smithfield. It is a great place. I can't think of anywhere else I'd rather live. And, but it is a great place and I think sometimes some of the issues, be it electricity or be it the taxes or whatever, I think, I think those things put a cloud over something that is very wonderful. And, and I've told a number of people about that and I've talked to a lot of people, do a lot of people who don't live in Smithfield. And if we don't sell Smithfield, if we're not positive about Smithfield, I don't think people outside of Smithfield are going to do it. And I think it's, and I'm not saying that we don't do that. I'm just saying it's, it's easy on anything to, to not be as positive. And I just hope that, that we can always continue to be positive and encourage all our citizens to be positive because it is a great place to be, I think.
That was it.
Any other comments from council?
Yes, sir. I know this past Thursday night, there was some diversity training. I know Mr. Tony Nixon and a group of individuals, employees or whatever, had some diversity training. I guess, you know, talking about diversity training or whatever. I could piggyback, you know, a little bit off what Emery just said. You know, Smithfield is a great place to stay, you know. I grew up here, been here all my life. But I'm going to read a text message that I got on September 14th at 8:35 a.m. "Are you up, old man? LOL. Call me when you get up. I know you guys are playing ball. So if it's, so if it's late this afternoon, I understand. Either way, negro." Five minutes later, 8:40. "Dang, Marlon. I'm sorry, big man. That was supposed to go to Mark Lee. I'm blind, my man. I hope I didn't wake you up. Hey, did you get guy, did you guys get any flooding reports? Hit me up when you wake up, sir Lee." I received this text from my department head right here in Smithfield. And yeah, this can be a good place to, to live. We talk about diversity, you know, bringing diverse people in, but back in January, I got pulled. It was by a sheriff. I was driving, leaving magic on the car wash. I had a hood on my head. So I just got pulled for no reason. And so when they got pulled me and then he figured out who I was, it was all of a sudden I have a nice day. So I mean, yep, Mr. Ashley, I, I agree with you saying, but on the people, out, people outside looking in, you start talking diversity. If I wasn't from Smithfield, I probably wouldn't want to come to Smithfield because of the perception. And these things, you know, they, they don't need to go away. These are things that needs to be exposed. There are now employees that are willing, you know, scared for their job, but they see these same actions. And I think, you know, I mean, you can't make nobody lose that, you know, whatever it is. But this is something that needs to be definitely addressed and I'm going to keep this text message, you know, I'm just going to keep it. And that's all I, I gotta say.
I'd like to say something. So far, everybody's talking. I know Marlon, I know him to be a good man and I know other people in Smithfield. I think race is always important. I think the United States has come a long way in the last 50 years from civil rights marches to today. But Marlon's right, we always need to be cognizant of what we say and do and careful about it and things that might seem funny to some person, you know, can be harmful. And I think, I think the police will stop black people or Latinos maybe more often than they'll stop white people. I, I think towns in Smithfield should always be cognizant of what we're doing, how we do things and careful about it. And even people who, who are joking around with family members or saying things and have said things that may seem okay 10 or 15 years ago, I don't think they're okay in the year 2014. So I think it's important to think about what we do and, and try to do the right thing all the time. Any other comments from the council?
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a comment, not about that, but I, I'm concerned about the Smithfield Crossing Project. We, we, we funded a project out there that town spent a lot of money on. And I, I'm very concerned about the, the plan that was drawn up and implemented about moving traffic. And I'm getting to the, starting to think that that new road we have is not going to I, I don't go out there every day, but I go out there on a regular basis. That roundabout, you ought to go out there and just sit on the side of the road sometime and, and look at people. They can't figure it out. And we have a very diverse population that comes through that roundabout. They're not from Smithfield. And I, I really am starting to question whether we were led in the right direction. We can put signs up, we can allow more signs, we can put stuff on the road, but ultimately it is people who are driving automobiles have to be able to get somewhere easily. And I, I just want us to continue to be aware that there are problems out there. I'm not sure they're fixable by signage. But I'm very fearful it's going to continue to be an ongoing problem. And we cannot afford to stick our head in the sand out there and allow that if it continues to go on with people not knowing what to do when they come in and about that roundabout. I don't foresee it changing. I think it'll be an ongoing problem. I just hope we don't get in this position where we have to address trying to get that roundabout taken out. But at this point, it appears to me that that may be our only alternative. That's all I got to say.
Just real quick, I know Saturday evening, Chief Scott, and I wish I could have got some video. Actually, there was a guy that had New York license tags and he must have been late to the movies because he started out, I mean, headed towards the movies parking lot, back through the grass and the woods and everything and he was getting it. But I mean, it's, it's, it's a dangerous situation and I mean, I wish I could have stopped him, you know, just to be able to leave him around. But I mean, he took off heading in the woods, heading towards the movies. I mean, and it's, it's a dangerous situation.
Those cutouts on the roads that aren't going to exist are a problem.
Yeah, they are. That is a problem.
Marlon, I don't want to belabor the point, but with your, with your text message, did you address that with the town staff?
Yeah. I have one comment I'd like to make. This is related to the power issue. I just want to tell the staff, thank you for the public forum we're able to have. It's a lot of gainful information and I'm very, very concerned about our rates and I look forward to the buyout in 2015 and lowering of our utility rates. There's one, one thought I had, I would like to share and I'd like to ask, as a potential if this could happen. It's just like if you're buying a car or a house, you look at both sides of the deal. I feel like it would be healthy if the council and of course the citizens were allowed to invite Duke Energy into the council chambers here and discuss from their perspective this buyout, if they'd be willing to talk with us.
They're not going to talk with us. Right now, they're all in negotiation stages and one they can't and next...
How do we know they can't? I'm just asking.
We, we can contact Electric Cities and see, but I, I don't, I can't imagine any official employee of Duke standing up and making any statement about anything that might or might not happen in the future.
Well, just understand, understand my concern. I, I'm somewhat of a realist and to some degree, this almost seems like a deal that's too good to be true. And I was talking to Mr. Ashley in the past and I just want to make sure that we're making the right decision because this is a 30-year thing and obviously going into this, you just need to, we just need to make sure that we're making the right decision.
But we are a very small player in that, in that pond, I can tell you.
But we do, we do have a say at that table. So I just want to make sure, make sure that, thank you.
Any other comments? If not, I'm going to let the town manager speak.
Thank you, Mayor. You've got my report for the monthly updates. Just want to highlight a few quick items. One, the police report, they've got their, their basic cost stats for the month. Also, just please note in that, that they've gotten the results from the most recent annual reports on their reported crimes. And it was nice to, to read that since 2009 that are on the reported crimes, the reported crimes have been reduced by approximately 33% since 2009. And that includes a 14% reduction for 2013, which was the last full year that the, the report was included, which has been, which is a great turnaround and a great, I think, great job by, by our police department and our police chief and, and doing the best they can with the resources that they have. That's good news, you know, we get that very frequently. In a way, we thought it may have planned off a little bit, but again, this is a good, a good news and good results for that, that department. Just want to commend them for what they've done. Also, I know you've heard a little bit from Mr. Emmler on the UDO revisions by the planning board, but the planning board is doing a great job on going through those articles. I think they're up through actually closer to nine or 10 of the articles. And again, some will go quicker than others. Some will take much more time than a few of the short ones. So they've made some good progress. And I think the act of the procedure and the process that they're reviewing it is a good one. They're meeting during their planning board meetings at the end of it to go through as many articles as they can do. So they involve most or all of the planning board staff to get that input. And of course, their recommendations will come to the council before, you know, anything is really kind of memorialized or put into, placed in the concrete terms so that you can review that and have time to review it for the final considerations and amendments to the UDO. Another quick update in planning, I think you recall that you did budget and the planning department has purchased a new software, which they're, they're incorporating now into their, their daily work. Had good success so far, still figuring out how to use a little bit of it, but it's been a good process so far. So I think they're happy to have that, that tool and they're using it well. So I appreciate the ability for them to purchase that and I think it's going to be a big, big help to that department. With a department basically of code enforcement of one, it's a great tool for Mr. Rec to use as he goes out and covers a lot of ground in town. So that's been a good, a good success for us. You may have seen the reports and last two week's reports that I provided to you about the Nus River, the, basically the, the greenway. It had basically an eroded portion of the greenway, kind of near the bridge. If you walk it or have been on it, you've seen it, it's been blocked off now. But there was a washout on the steep bank on the riverside. So we've had to kind of protect that and try to keep the, the dirt that's been washed out, out of the river. We are going to have to get repairs and approval from DWQ and/or the Army Corps. We're working through that process right now. Unfortunately, I think it is going to take a little bit of, of an effort to, one, to at least get the smaller permit, which we hope we can stay within that permit and move quickly. Don't have an idea on the repair costs yet to, to repair that. Basically, it's a bank repair under the greenway, but I think it could, it could be somewhat expensive at this point. Do not know the cost, but we could be talking about $10,000, $20,000 or even more to repair that, depending on the nature of it. And most likely closer to $30,000 or $40,000 to repair that. We're not sure yet, but those are just preliminary numbers. But it could be a fairly large issue. So Mr. Emmer is working with the appropriate authorities to kind of find out the best way to repair that and also the most costly effective way, both from a permitting standpoint and also just a repair standpoint. As you saw, we removed the economic development, the strategic plan from the presentation tonight's, on tonight's agenda. We're going to meet with Mr. Lane tomorrow night at 6:30 in the conference room. Really just go over the, the final suggestive plan one more time with the committee. Certainly anyone, anyone is invited to attend that meeting if they want to and that will give us a little bit more time to review it. I think Mr. Lane is, he's prepared to move forward with it. So any last second corrections or additions will be welcomed by Mr. Lane and we can hopefully get that out as soon as possible and he will present... hopefully get that out as soon as possible, and he will present it at next month's meeting. But he was prepared to present at least the draft plan tonight, but again, at the committee's request, he held off so that we could work on just a little bit more and get it just right. So hopefully, we'll have that for you at the November meeting. And two other quick things. Our November regular meeting, it is scheduled for the, typically for Tuesday, the 5th, oh, I'm sorry, Tuesday, the 4th, that is the election day, so as has been the practice in the past, we're going to move our council meeting from Tuesday, the 4th, to Wednesday, the 5th, at 7:00 p.m. So we'll send you reminders on that, but because of the, the use of this room for the election, for one of the ballot precincts, we're going to move, let that, let that place stay open and move our meeting back to this room on Wednesday in November, so we'll make sure we remind you on that. And finally, just a, just an indication of an upcoming date, there's a congressional candidates forum that's scheduled for October 16th. That'll be hosted by the Smithfield Selma Chamber of Commerce. It'll be at the Johnson Community College in their great hall at 7:00 p.m. on October 16th. So if you're interested in the candidates and what they have to say, all candidates have been invited that are a part of that race, you'll get a chance to hear from them. Hopefully, it'll be fairly short. I think the idea is to keep it within an hour to hour and 15 minutes. There'll be a moderator who will present the questions and allow the candidates to give a timed response to each of the questions. So if you have an interest there for the public, you'll have a good chance to see those candidates at that time. And, man, that's all I have. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. You do have as part of this, the draft of the next, I believe it was three departments that have provided you the operational management audit that was part of, handed out with the meeting, or the, my report document, so you should have that. And just as I've indicated before, if you have any comments or questions about those, those items that were researched, please send me an email, just reference the focus point number, and tell me something you want to get more information on, or if you want to get more information on a completely unrelated topic in that department, let me know, and I'll send that out or provide it to you one way or the other, and we can add that to the, to the analysis. That's no problem at all. And I appreciate the comments that I have received on that so far, so thank you.
At this time, I believe that concludes our meeting. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. Motion carries.